Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners meet legislative meeting for Wednesday, October 30th, 2024. I'd ask that we stand recognizing a moment of silence followed by the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I just want to remind everybody that we are being live streamed today in an attempt to be more open and engaging to the public. And I'd also ask my fellow commissioners to consider today, I've got to leave at 10:30 sharp. I've got, I've been asked to do a, an event for the administrative office of the Pennsylvania courts today that will be live and televised at 11 o'clock related to our statewide behavioral health system and the need for the courts. And everyone to be on the same page as we begin to really look at the deficiencies and ways to be able to build out everything from intercept zero throughout the entire system. And I'm, I would ask today that we try to, if the commissioners are agreeable, to move our items for action up prior to where they're listed on the agenda. So we may be able to take action prior to the departure today. If that's acceptable. I'd like to start with, first of all, the approval of minutes for the October 9th, 2024 workshop meeting minutes and the October 16th legislative meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Douglas.
I will second that.
Second by Commissioner Pries. Is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Salary board meeting, I know that the controller Bateman is not here, but for the audience, the salary board consists of the three commissioners and the individual row officer, elected official, that's the oversight of the court or the, their individual offices. Or it would be the president judge in the case of the courts. October 16th, 2024 salary board meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Douglas.
Will second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Pries. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. If we could, Tanisha, if we can jump right into salary board, that would be great.
Should we do, should we do executive session somewhere?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Executive sessions held between meetings. My apologies. I want to make sure we're legally following the appropriate order. Yes, yes. Got it. So Tanisha, hold up one second. I'm going to take the guidance of the legal team as we proceed.
Commissioners, on October 29th, the commissioners had an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding the purchase of real property, the general election, donations, and letters of support.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Mr. Pies? Any questions for Mr. Pies? Hearing none, we will offer the first opportunity for public participation today on agenda items only. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to participate on the agenda items only before the Board of Commissioners? Seeing none, I spoke out of turn. If we could have Ms. Tanisha Whedon come up to present the salary board and the personnel packet today. Good morning.
I'd like to request a vote on salary board items one through three.
Are there any additional items or any additional information to mention in front of the board before we take action?
Just one of the position numbers changed, but other than that, it's the same from last week.
Is there, are there any questions from the commissioners for Ms. Whedon before we take any action or entertain a motion?
Just for clarification, the, the three items is one, two, and one.
One, two. Yep, there's A1 and two, and then there's B1.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. And I will ask the question that Commissioner Priest normally does. Are these all budgeted for? They are. Is there any additional questions for Tanisha? And entertain a motion for the salary board items A1 and two and B1.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Pries.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The personnel packet, I know last week we voted on items, I guess, four through seven, 13, 26, 27, 38 through 34, 43. Is there any additional information you would like to provide to the board before we consider these personnel items?
No.
Are there any questions from the board? Yes, Commissioner Priest.
Yes, Chairman Hart, we have a question on item number 39. Which is budget and finance. I see the directors here. Was for a change of salary for fiscal manager. I don't see any position justification or comments next to that one, but I see comments next to a lot of other ones. And that is a, I believe, close to a $17,000 increase for that position. I'd like to hear the justification for that.
Mr. Davis?
The plan, as I made you all aware, was to reclass that to a deputy director position because that more closely follows the responsibilities and duties that that individual has been. I looked through the salaries of other people in that position, and that is, to be honest, lower than everyone else in the same position. She has received interest from other departments as she's worked closely with human services and even other positions around the county. So being a small department of three full timers and one part timer, goal is to ensure valued and highly trained staff stay in their position. He being 38 this year, I have three positions. There is really no plan for advancement. I have no plans to leave. I'll tell you all that. So.
Depends upon how this budget goes this year.
Well, then I hope it goes very well. And you enjoyed your package. So the promote in place is the only option I really have to retain staff.
All right. So you said it would be a deputy director? Is, is the position title going to change? Cause it's currently fiscal manager.
Yes, that will change. That will be in the next packet. As I put this through Oracle, I was able to get the salary through in time to be on the packet. I was not able to get the paperwork over to HR to do reclass at the same.
I'm a little concerned about this process here just because, well, first of all, a deputy director for a staff of how many?
Three, of three full time and one part time, including me.
Normally a deputy director is over a much larger staff. And I had requested as one commissioner, this be done during the budget negotiation process. So. Therefore, I see it as proceeded to this point. So I will be making my vote on that. I'd like number 39 to be pulled out and voted on separately.
And, and I, I quite frankly, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to the idea of having this discussion during the process. And, and if that is the, the actual, that, that's usually how things would be done in these cases. And I've raised the same concerns as you have to Mr. Davis. And I asked him to get the feedback from the other commissioners and he had indicated that he had talked about them doing print support. So I, I assumed that that was the case of not being able to have those formal discussions. I think it's an absolutely appropriate item to be able to have as a part of budget discussions. And you would not have any objections to do it for me. The one thing I would add, and we should have a, you know, a discussion about this now. And I want to include it in the budget discussion if it's not acted on today, is the, the ability to have a breakdown of the, the general fund revenues and how that position is going to be derived. Cause the question I always have is, you know, what's the general fund increase in expenses? And what's the makeup of what you're requesting? Cause I also believe it was a larger than average increase that we should be valued. And whenever you do these kinds of things, it has reverberating impacts on other departments. So in order to do that, I want to make sure that for the record, we understand the sort of revenue that would be made and the kind of general fund impact that this would have.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up too, because I was getting some feedback from staff, the, the me too response to that, so large increase. And I believe I did make it clear that, that this is something that I would support discussing during the budget process, not during a, a meeting prior to that.
You're not going to have my objective.
Can I, can I ask a question? Given that the effective date is November 11th, based on what I'm looking at in the packet, if that's accurate, we're really only talking about seven weeks difference here. Is that accurate? Like if we push it to, to discuss during the budget process?
Correct.
Okay.
And the only reason, I'll just tell you, the only reason, well, first, 25% of the salary is the offset by human services work. So that's the breakdown. I'll make sure that's in the budget packet for you as well. The only reason I put it through now was because she had gotten interest in other departments and was planning on leaving. So I wanted to present this before that happened.
And, and I want to make it clear, Sharon has been an incredible employee. I mean, this is not about a reflection of her work, cause she does a dynamic job. And I think she's been able to pick up pieces in various departments that have been understaffed. That quite frankly, she has done really good work. But I would agree that, you know, as a matter, matter of pattern in the board has set a precedence in the past, particularly when it's a larger increase like this, it should be dealt within a budget process, not necessarily just as a response to, you know, sort of the competition that exists within and without county government. So. I'm, I'm for moving that in that direction if that's the, the will of the board. So what I'm getting here is this item number, let's refer to it again. 39. Can I, first of all, let's, do we have a motion for the personnel packet absent the items that were worked and worked through last week to be able to adopt absent number 39?
Take the motion for the items in front of us from one to, is that correct here? One to 78 minus 39.
And the items that were voted on last week.
Just make sure that we have a motion made in second. The minutes should reflect that the items we, we actually voted on last week are not a part of that motion. Is there any discussion?
Again, I want to follow up with Commissioner Hart, we just said, I also agree that that individual does very good work for us. That is just an increase to the extent that I believe it should be discussed as part of our budget package and negotiations.
Is there any additional discussion before we vote on the, the motion that's in front of us? All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. And 39, I will look to the solicitor and just say, can we table this? Or at least actually to remove the matter from the process until we have this in our budget discussions and are able to have larger discussion and a formal action with, along with the budget approval.
Correct. So you could table it to decide here at a future meeting, but it seems more appropriate to pull it because you want to address it at the budget.
So I, I, we, do we need a formal motion to pull this?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so I would entertain a motion to pull item 39 from today's agenda.
That we pull item 39 from today's agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, any additional discussion?
I just want to make it clear that I'm in support of this in the new year. I, I, I would love to see Sharon remain in that role. I, I just like, like my colleagues believe like it should happen with the budget process. Thanks, Chris.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Do we, let me get back to our agenda here.
Mr. Davis.
And I've got a couple of questions on this too. So particularly on the investment report.
Well, there's no changes to that as submitted.
My, my only question, I, I see both from First National, they've got close to $20 million at a much lower interest rate than, you know, both customers and F and M and Old Dominion. And I'm just wondering, even Pligot Prime is in that position where we have higher interest rates. And I would suspect you have a good answer that they are capped at a certain amount that we can provide. And if not, why would we not be taking advantage of the higher interest rates?
So kind of go down the line here. F and M Trust cannot take any more than what we currently have there at that rate.
So they're capped.
So they are capped. Old Dominion. That rate I will, I'm working on following up as a result of the recent rate cut by feds, because most of these, with the exception of customers, those rates aren't guaranteed for any period of time. So I've been in conversation with First National as far as a guarantee and what they can do. Pligot has dropped slightly under five at this point. They're 4.98 as of this morning. And Old Dominion, I will have to verify.
So.
The other, the other reason I leave some at First National is they are one of the places that we can wire funds out of same day with customers. We have to notify them a day in advance. So should a payment come up or we need additional funding that wasn't planned on, that is the. One of the only places we can pull that from and have it in the account the same day.
So again, I know we consult with our cash vest and our three plus one partners that have put us in a position to really gain the most interest based upon the municipal debt and finance act that we can legally invest in, in order to provide that best return for taxpayers. Again, is this a part of their plan? Or are we going to see an adjustment quickly based upon current rates?
Depending on what First National comes back with, this is a part of the plan. Optimistic they will come back at least to match because customers beginning January 1st is going to, it's 5% APY, which works out to, I believe, around 4.6% APR. So depending on what the other banks decide to do around that time, what First National comes back with, there may be a shift in plan.
And I know seven days is not a lot, but as you get these rates back, could you please keep the commissioners, the Board of Commissioners informed? I mean, the sooner we're able to make those deposits into areas that may have a, a larger interest bearing account, the less we need to rely on tax dollars on the interest that we earn. So I'm always anxious to try to make moves into the best possible outcomes. And if we can do that and then ratify it at the next board meeting, as long as it's acceptable to the Board of Commissioners, that would be my preference.
Yeah. And I don't expect much by way of offers or guarantees for the next week or two, till the Fed meets, I believe, November 7th. So depending on what they do then, we'll sure dictate what most of the banks are willing to do and guarantee.
Yeah. Just give us a, an update as to where we're at.
Yeah, certainly.
All right. Thank you. Any additional questions for Mr. Davis? All right. Purchase order packet?
I have no changes to the packet. It's the same as it was from last week. So that is ready for your vote and approval.
Are there any questions on today's purchase order report? That didn't need to be addressed by Mr. Davis? Hearing none, I'd accept the motion to adopt the purchase order report as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Douglas.
I will second that.
Second by Commissioner Pries. Are there, is there any additional discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Chief Burke's report.
Chief Burke's report, Mr. Preece?
I have nothing to report unless there are questions of me.
Any questions for Mr. Preece? Hearing none, solicitors report, Mr. Owens?
Matters requiring board action have been uh, reviewed and approved for action by the Solicitor's Office.
Are there any questions for Mr. Owens? Any questions for Mr. Owens? Hearing none, um, next is the matters requiring board action. Uh, item thirty eight, the training packet vote on four and five only. Um, are there any items on today's matters requiring board action that need to be pulled out and or voted separately?
Uh, I would prefer for three and thirty six to be pulled.
Got it, three are separate vote and thirty six. Alright, so is there a um, a motion? Uh, Commissioner Preece, you have anything you want to pull out?
If I could just get an explanation on number thirty seven, resolution twenty twenty four fifteen to adopt a statement of revival. Revive Cumberland Dolphin Harrisburg Transit Authority, AKA Capital Area Transit Authority as a body politic and court.
Yep. Yeah, so um, received a request from Rich Far. There should have been a request sooner than this, probably in the last year or so, to keep that alive. Basically, the previous resolution had uh, lapsed. And this is just to revive the, obviously, it's stated Cumberland Dolphin Harrisburg Transit Authority, AKA CAT. Um, so that is operating in like a legal manner.
Thank you.
So so in the solicitor's review, there's nothing material that has changed. It's just an a renewal of the actual um, Transit Authority Charter by the required municipal entities in order to maintain its operation.
Correct, no change, that's precisely what it is.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, I have one more, item, item ten. Commissioner Douglas, I know you're running uh, shotgun on a lot of uh, the items related to Dolphin County Prison. Have you reviewed this and you're okay with?
I have reviewed it, yes. Yes, I'm okay with it.
Okay, thank you.
It's our shower that we've been trying to get juvenile section for the prison for quite some time, uh, finally getting that on an agenda, so.
Thank you.
So are any of those items you'd like to pull out, or they?
No, they're fine.
Be a part of a package, okay? So um, could we have a motion for items one through thirty eight?
So moved.
The hold on, with uh, with three and um, thirty six being uh, pulled out and or voted separately.
Make that amended motion to approve those items with three and thirty six being pulled out and voted on separately.
Motion to be made uh, by Commissioner Preece, second by Commissioner Douglas, is there any additional discussion? Any additional discussion, hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Commissioner Douglas? Items three.
Do you, do you want, do you want to just make a motion for three, I'll just make comments on?
Sure, sure, um. Uh, I, uh, items three is the agreement between Dolphin County Tax Assessment and Picto- Pictoometry International Corp. Um, DBA Eagle View for aerial imagery for a three year contract in the amount of two hundred fifty five thousand, three hundred and thirty six dollars. Uh, do I have a motion for its adoption?
So moved.
I will, uh, make motions been made by Commissioner Preece, I will second the motion, uh, uh, points of discussion.
I just want to share that this wasn't an RFP process, uh, there wasn't a competitive process for this, it's a quarter of a million dollars. Feel like it should be a competitive process for this work, and so therefore I would support it.
I appreciate that, uh, I I don't know if there is anybody else in the um, business of doing this for tax assessment. I know that uh, uh, from my understanding and awarement, aware uh, awareness of this issue, uh, Eagle View does uh, these flyovers for eighty to ninety percent of counties in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Um, and I know they provide a specialized way that they take photographs and do uh, overlays uh, within our current data system to ensure that any parcels that have been changed or adjusted. As you do the overlay of those three D pictrom- pictometry pictures, it indicates that there's been a material change to a building. And based upon that overlay is usually where our tax assessment folks go out and they would then uh, physically take a look at those properties and it would cause you to then do an analysis of whether or not there's been improvements or or changes that have been made. So um, I don't know if there's any competing group that does the flyovers and and um, does the uh, ability to uh, also interplay with our current data system, but it's something we can absolutely find out. If there is any other competitors, we'd be glad to uh, to include them in an RFP process.
Well, that being said, are we, are we voting to approve this three year contract?
I I yeah, I'll make a vote that we, or we, there's been a motion made in second to approve, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Well, I have a question on, I have a question before we vote on, are we? Is this, this is a three year contract?
Correct.
So then we wouldn't be able to come back and revisit it for three years?
Again, I I think there's some value. Um, they they have received a reduction in the cost of this contract over a three year time period. Uh, I think there's been a uh, a downward movement despite pressures to continue to have rising costs for Eagle View and Pictoometry um, services. Uh, but they have negotiated a rate that keeps um, the actual payment from the counties consistent and not going up over three deals. So there's been some cost advantages to doing a longer term deal, but I, if it's the board's will to do a one year deal, there may be some financial concerns, but we certainly will move forward uh, with the will of the board.
Is this, and two fifty five is the total for three years?
Correct.
Yeah. Um, again, I I will support this, because they've done good work per director of that department um, in the past and moving forward, but I think we need to, we keep talking about RFPing, so we need to RFP. But I will support, I will support three, so let's vote.
Alright, um, any additional discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And the other one that has been pulled is item thirty six. Um, do we have a motion um, to adopt item thirty six?
I'll make a motion that we adopt item thirty six, agreement L zero zero eight seven four between Dolphin County and Herbert Road Rubik for NBIS inspection of Dolphin County Bridges twenty twenty five through twenty twenty nine.
Do we have a second? I will second that motion. Uh, points of discussion, Commissioner Douglas?
So, once again, I'm here delivering news of what I consider another flawed, frustratingly opaque process for a significant contract in Dolphin County. On March twentieth, Dolphin County posted for this critical bridge inspection contract. Did I hear about it beforehand? No. Was I notified beforehand? No, was I notified when it went out? No. Let me clarify, this is a five year agreement, multimillion dollar contract, and I was left completely out of the process from the start. On April eighteenth, the posting closed. And surprise, again, no notification. On April twenty ninth, the selection committee is formed. Three people are picked to assess the qualifications for this major contract. Did anyone think to involve me or request my input? No. It's beyond frustrating that it took an engineering firm, meeting with me in my office in May, for me to even find out that this went out to bid. They just wanted assurances that the process was going to be fair, especially given past suspicions of favoritism. Imagine their shock and mine. When they found out I didn't even know the bid had gone out, much less that it had closed a month prior. Let's be perfectly clear, I've been contacted by multiple business leaders, expressing that without knowing the right people or paying the right people, they can't even hope for a contract with this county. Many refuse to play these under the table games and as a result are permanently shut out. Blocking businesses from work isn't exactly a novel concept here, but it's outrageous that this continues unabated despite my ongoing push for competition since day one showing up on this job. I want contractors working for us to actually earn their place here. Especially those on endless auto renewal agreements, yes, auto renew agreements yearly. No contract should be on an auto renew agreement, but we have some that have been since the early two thousands, where we have no accountability or checks and balances to ensure taxpayers get the best value. But here we are again, taxpayers forced to foot the bill for what I'm going to call a corrupt crony driven process, where external interests and who's paid off are prioritized over securing a good deal for the public. And for anyone thinking I'm overreacting by insinuating paid off, special interests, all this, I want to lay out this process. Mr. Preece saw this, oversaw this process, he was contacted during that by none other than former Commissioner Jeff Haste, who recommended three people for the selection committee. Of course, two of those three made the committee, with the third member being Mr. Preece himself. Haste isn't even an office, yet he is shaping the selection process, putting in his people on the selection committee. Haste, once employed by HRG, who's the one who won this bid, and who knows, he might still be employed by HRG, he directly contacts a staff member, overseeing the process, steering the selection committee, and now I'm supposed to rubber stamp the committee's recommendations. So the taxpayers of Dolphin County, I ask, how is this not a compromised process? Like, uh, seriously, how could you, I I I'm new to this, I'm not a politician. Uh, but you just look at it and you're like, this makes no sense. If you want to get the best deal, this isn't how you do it. You deserve better, you work your ass off to earn money. And this is how we're stewarding your money. And at the very least, you deserve a government that keeps external influences out of the decision making process. Yet, here in Dolphin County, protecting taxpayers' interest seems to me, in eleven months on the job, to be an afterthought. And I'm told I'm one of three commissioners, yet it's clear that I'm working alongside an unofficial fourth commissioner. A former one who isn't content with his wife's former job at the Tourism Authority, or his paychecks from Prime Care while he was a sitting commissioner, or his NRA liaison role based on a fabricated premise, or the multiple board appointments that he currently still sits on, none of that is enough. Now he gets to influence who our next bridge inspector will be, a contractor with millions and years of taxpayer dollars. I'd say the gig is up, but it's clearly far from up. We seem willing to continue the charade disregarding what it communicates to the hardworking taxpayers of this county. Taxpayers who deserve better than a process corrupted by outside interference and completely lacking any true competition. I could not be more emphatic in my no for this vote.
Is there any additional comments?
Yeah, I'm gonna uh, have to follow it up with a couple of questions here. Um, one, is this agreement, has this agreement been signed off on by the Solicitor's Office and approved for legality?
Yes.
And is there any issue that the solicitor sees uh, in terms of the process being compromised by my colleagues' comments in terms of uh, outside influence on the process?
Well, I, I that, most of what was talked about was occurred before I even came here. Um, my review was strictly legal, and I saw nothing that would compromise approval of that contract from a legal standpoint.
Is there potential of a conflict if an external entity requests that certain committee people be put on a selection committee? Is there a potential of conflict if a commissioner is not notified of a bid going out? Are these legal questions?
Yeah, it.
It's a challenging situation.
Yeah.
I understand, you're in a difficult, you can't give us legal advice in a public meeting, I understand.
Based upon uh, some of these allegations that were made by my colleague, um, I'm going to ask, is it, would it be appropriate, if I'm not comfortable voting on this today, to get more information on some of the comments that were made? And what the uh, the ramifications would be for not doing it right now? Is it okay to uh, ask to uh, pull this item number thirty six?
I think that's, I think it's perfectly appropriate to table that, I.
I mean, there are some, some charged comments here this morning that uh, have been stated that I can't justify voting on it without knowing whether those comments are 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 truthful, or whether they are uh, something that needs to be uh, looked into for.
Yes, you 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 could pull or table it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we pull item number thirty six from today's packet.
I believe that that, were you the original maker of the motion, Commissioner Preece? Yes, you are, and and in fact, uh, if that's going to be a friendly amendment request, I would um, I would agree to that friendly amendment to pull that item. So would not have to change or do another motion. Is there uh, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you, and again, my apologies, I've got a housewell.
If you weren't here at the start of the meeting, Commissioner Hartwick is headed to um, uh, an arrangement uh, that he has to be at at eleven o'clock in Hershey, so that's why he has to go. We're going to go back to um, the first page of our agenda. Uh, Dolphin County Veteran Affairs Office, Tom Caro is going to come up and share about Operation Green Light for veterans. Thank you, Tom.
Yes, sir.
Look at that, that is appropriate, green shirt for Operation Green Light.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Uh, as you know, Veterans Day is the next month. And once again, Dolphin County is adopting Oper- Operation Green Light, which is a campaign designed to show support to our nation's veterans, raise awareness of the role we play in support, providing support and resources to veterans and advocate for legislation that will strengthen all counties' ability to support our veterans. So we're asking the residents of Dolphin County to shine a green light from November fourth through November eleventh, to show support to its over seventeen thousand veterans in our county.
Can you give a uh, a historical perspective here, we, when we started doing this and and the purpose?
So uh, we started this uh, three years ago, I believe, um, once again with uh, asking the bet, the the county to shine a green light for the support of our veterans. And I know our county buildings were lit up green. Uh, Hershey Medical Center was lit up, was lit up green. The uh, Lieutenant Governor's balcony was lit up green uh, for those of the years. Uh, we're going to do that again, also, Marcus Street Bridge was lit green last year. Uh, the only one this year that won't be will be the Lieutenant Governor's balcony, they're having some problems with the lighting system up there. But uh, Marcus Street Bridge will be lit green and uh, Hershey Medical Center will be lit up green this year along with the county buildings.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention, I think we should put that out there on social media too, and uh, I want to uh, say thank you for your service uh, and the great work that you have done since taking over as director. I remember back in two thousand and ten, actually, October first, two thousand and ten, I got sworn in as Commissioner, placing former Commissioner DeFrancesco. Uh, I remember our numbers for veterans coming in at that time were right around two hundred thousand dollars a year in uh, in the amount we would bring in for the veterans. And would you like to tell everyone how much that number is up to this year so far?
Uh, Commissioner, from uh, January first up until uh, last month, was about nine point nine million.
Nine point nine million in benefits have come into our veterans. I mean, you have taken that level as as uh, Tony DeFrancesco, our former director, uh, started that push and you've just taken it to a whole other level, and I can't thank you enough. The the veterans and their families, we have the second largest veterans population, I believe, in the state, well over seventeen thousand. And it's just great that you're reaching out, making sure that veterans who deserve this are getting uh, are getting the benefits.
I had a great mentor.
You know that guy? Yes, yes. Yeah, thank you, Tom. Tom, thank you so much, we really appreciate this. So just so I understand, residents, uh, we're encouraging residents of Dolphin County to go out and buy a green light, unscrew the light bulb and put a green light in during those times to to uh, to just show their support for veterans, correct?
Sir, from uh, yes, November fourth through November eleventh.
November fourth through November eleventh, great. Well, thank you very much for all your work, I I'll echo what uh, Commissioner Priest said, thank you for your work with veterans and ensuring that uh, as they have served our country, that we're serving them well in retirement and even just post uh, military career and ensuring that any any benefits that they have that they might not be aware of, or they might not be able to access, that you're you're helping uh, bridge that for them, and we really appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now move on to former business. No former business, any new business? Commissioners discussion and action, Commissioner Preece, anything to share?
Bringing up the the upcoming election, um, I know staff has been very busy out there, there's a lot going on, it's a presidential election, so clearly uh, the numbers are increasing during the the primary, I think we had a thirty percent turnout. Uh, Director Spackman had told me he's projecting seventy to seventy six percent turnout here in Dolphin County, which, you know, that still means a quarter. which, that still means a quarter of the people aren't voting. And in the primary, seventy percent of the residents didn't vote. And when I, I look just in the audience right now, or just up here with us, you know, people have died, thousands and thousands of people have died over the years, so that every American has the opportunity and the right to vote. And we should be pushing with mail-ins. Those numbers should someday hopefully reach a hundred percent turnout. And I just urge people, get out and vote, take advantage of that. Because if you don't vote, you're gonna get four years or two years of whatever you potentially didn't vote for or didn't vote against. And then you have to live with that for the two-year terms or the four-year terms. I often say, I was talking to students last week about platforms, and we did the thirty to seventy percent turnout. I said, if there's a platform of a breakfast, lunch and dinner, and for breakfast, let's say, the three of you are running on a breakfast, lunch and dinner of a glass of water for breakfast, a slice of cheese for lunch, and a, an onion sandwich for dinner, and you gotta pay ten dollars a day for that? And Nick and I are running on a, a platform of eggs and bacon for breakfast, and hamburgers and hot dogs and pizza for lunch, and steak and chicken for dinner, and you get paid fifty dollars a day for that. Who's gonna win? Well, common sense would be that the folks that are, that aren't the water for breakfast, a slice of cheese for lunch, and an onion sandwich for dinner would be. But if only one of you three came out and voted, but both of us did, our platform's going to win. And even though common sense says that one shouldn't win, you then have to live with that for two years or four years. So get out and vote. I mean, you have an opportunity. There's no reason why the turnout isn't much higher. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Priest.
Well, I'm sorry. I also want to thank, that he's told me they have twelve hundred volunteers ready to go on Election Day. Polls open from seven AM to eight PM. Hundred and fifty, I think, eight polling places in the county, three hundred and fifty-four machines are gonna be out there. And Pennsylvania, specifically Dauphin County, we are on the map. So all, all eyes are shining on Dauphin County and Pennsylvania. And that department has done a remarkable job in past years, getting those mail-ins in and tabulated and, and out on the website by nine o'clock PM. And then the, the day-ins come in by midnight. So who knows if that's gonna happen this year? But they've done a remarkable job in the past, and we need to fully support them moving forward. Thank you.
We're incredibly thankful for all of our volunteers at our Elections Department and all of our staff there. We know this election is very, it's a lot of pressure on a lot of people, but certainly on those who are charged with ensuring it runs smoothly. And, and we couldn't be more thankful for all their efforts and energy to ensure that that takes place. I will go ahead and receive the correspondence items one, two, three, four, and five. Anything else I need to do there? Just say it's received. Okay? And pass it along to the Chief Clerk. Yes? And we will open it now for public participation. Anyone for public participation? Come right on up and just introduce your name and address.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Andrea Brown. I'm currently still homeless at the time. And that's why I'm here. I want my life back. I say that because some years ago, I would say probably in two thousand twenty-one, I, during the time of COVID, you know, had nothing else to do really. So I did a lot of researching. And I came across some articles, several various subjects to do with the government, you know, mass surveillance. And I read an article where it's talking about that a law was passed supposedly about allowing the government to tap, you know, to do why it happened. It was supposedly before, for the purpose of getting criminals before they committed crimes. Terrorists with terrorism and things like that. Then I had come across the secret watch list that the government has in place. And I personally have been affected by that. I have been targeted. And I suspect that my name has been nominated into that, onto that watch list. And services have been denied me. I've been my devices have been being monitored unknowingly to myself until some years ago. The Lord had revealed that to me, basically. Showed me where I was attacked. And I used to advocate, I used to actively advocate for others. And so I'm, I'm just a little bit upset because I'm, I really, I'm tired of the government has been doing so much to me. Harrisburg has taken so much from me. And so I come here not asking for my life back, but claiming it back, demanding it back. I want my name taken off of that list. I want my, my freedom back to move around, to do what I want to do. I've never been on a plane, but I'm on that list. And I know I'm on that list. I have experiences. I have, I have documents that I have stored, saved up because I knew this time was coming, that I was gonna come before the CEOs like yourselves over this, this county for one. And before, you know, those in position who work for us, the American people. But it's not just me, and it's not just about me. It is much bigger than me. This is so much bigger than me. And they're doing it not just to me. It's to stop advocates. They're using Pegasus spyware. And they've been, I, I've stopped walking with my phone. I stopped walking with my devices. I stopped walking with my ID. Because even my ID, they do use the RFID readers. And I'm, people have come to where I was at, supposedly undercover, but I made them to get me, to get my information. They wanted only my information. So they had the situation, they manipulated the situation. For instance, there was a time that I was staying at the hotel in New Company. I lived there for eight months because I could not get housing because they've blocked me, the government has blocked me from getting services that Americans should be privileged to. I was at the hotel, and because they wanted my credit card information, they had it where the clerk in their office isolated me. They wouldn't allow other guests of the hotel to come in at that time. And the, the clerk, for instance, asked me for my, my card. But my information was already on file. And usually when I go to pay, they just, you know, I don't need my card. This particular time morning, he told me I had to bring my card back. I had to go back to my room and get my card. And when I came back, they had a sign on the door, basically saying something, uh, Lauren, I mean, keeping other guests out of the office at that time. And so I went in there, and there was two other people in the office. And I, I made them. I knew they were there to get my information. I knew it. And so that's what, the, one of the gentlemen came and stood close by long enough to, for his reader to get my information. And I knew it was a setup. I knew it. I felt it, you know, I had that hunch, if you will. So I use that as an example of a time that, that has happened. And I'm saying all this to say there, there's so much that the government has been doing that needs to now come to the forefront, be brought to the forefront. And I'm here to do that because I have experienced it. I have experienced it for a lot of years. I would say several years, if not longer than that. And I wanted to ask a question to you, sir.
Sure.
Commissioner Douglas, in regards to the prison board meeting that I just attended for the first time ever last week. They was talking about there were so many registered voters, the inmates.
Yeah.
And I had heard and learned this a long time ago, and I don't know how true it is or if things have changed since. But I was told that once a person has been convicted of a crime, that they cannot vote.
In Pennsylvania, that's not true. In Pennsylvania, you have to be serving time for, if you're serving time for a felony, then you, then you do not have the right to vote. But in any other circumstance, unless I believe you committed election, an election crime, an election-based crime, which is, I think we've only had a, less than a handful of people even do that in last year, for example. So it's, it's actually a much broader swath of people in Pennsylvania that are allowed to vote. And I'll remind everyone that most individuals in Dauphin County Prison are being held on cash bail, and therefore they've, they are innocent until proven guilty, and their, their constitutional right to vote should be protected. And, and, and not just protected, but they should have access to the ballot. And so that's one of the, one of the places in which Dauphin County Prison has been a leader. And, and we're hoping that we can get multiple counties participate in that because there's many counties that don't participate at the level which we do. But yes, there, there are individuals in our prison that vote. Thank you for your comments. I don't know what we can do about a watch list because in the county, we don't have watch lists that I'm aware of. This is probably more of a federal thing you're referencing that we wouldn't have, you know, influence on. But one thing I will say is, you know, as, as someone passionate about unhoused issues, and certainly as you're currently unhoused, we want to ensure you have all the resources you can have and that there's no, nobody, you know, keeping you from those resources. And so I know we've already been in email communication, but you know, email me if you're feeling like any of those services are being denied you. I, I want to do everything I can in my power to make sure that you get the services you need to ensure that you can, you know, build your life back, and we want to support you in that. So thank you for your comments today.
And even still recently. So yes.
Yeah, well, email me, please. Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you. Anyone else for public participation? Reverend Tilly, how are you?
Very well. My name is Reverend Ron Tilly the second. I live on Green Street in the city of Harrisburg. I'm a chaplain at Enso Wellness, and I'm speaking in that capacity. I'm not speaking in the capacity of any other of my employers. I, I treasure you, Francesco. And I'm also, I personally agree with the comments that I'm about to share. We, Enso Wellness promotes creative solutions to community health and wellbeing. And one of the ways that a community can be healthy is by exercising their right to vote. We have many citizens who are able to start to find their voice, cast a vote. And it's an important part of their recovery process or recovering in terms of becoming healthy again. And so we were connecting people in the community with the opportunity to vote early in person using the on-demand voting that we have here in Pennsylvania. And we started by looking at how the county was preparing for this. And we saw that on the county's website, they did not list the extended hours that were being provided for the county election office to accommodate the on-demand voting process and other needs that the county election office was providing for the community leading up to the election. And so we contacted the county because we were in favor of the expanded hours. We were grateful for them. But how do you get that information out to the community if not on the website? And we looked at other major counties, and they all included the expanded hours on their website. So we did make that recommendation, and we want to thank the, the Dauphin County Board of Elections Commissioners and a Director Spackman, a Director of Registration and Election, that they did make that correction to the website. And we thank you for responding to that recommendation. We also made a recommendation that a link be provided on how, on the website, along with the other featured links on like how to get your mail or absentee ballot, on how to vote early in person using the on-demand process. And the county was very responsive, and we thank you for adding that in preparation for the, the process where residents could vote early in person. But we did find several issues when we went to the polling place, and that was the the mail ballot applications were not being given automatically to people in line. They were being asked, are you, do you have your ID with you? That was the sole question being asked before the mail ballot application was being handed out. And not, do you have your ID or your social security number, your last four, your social security number, which you could also use if you didn't have ID? And so we, we were, we did bring those concerns along with a few others to the board and to Director Spackman, and they were promptly corrected the next day. And we saw that the employees were doing the process differently after we brought those concerns. And we wanted to thank you for having a responsive ear to the concerns that we raised to be able to make the on-demand process more accessible to our community residents. And thank you very much for hearing us out.
Reverend Tilly, thank you so much for your comments. Thank you for your passion to get people signed up to vote as well and ensure that they are fully enfranchised with their right to vote. Appreciate you. Hello, how are you?
My name is Carol Mataraju, and I'm from Camp Hill. And I'm here today to address elections processes in Dauphin County. I'm probably one of thousands of citizens who recognize the vulnerabilities in our current day election processes. The reason I'm here today is because of what I see as a lack of transparency in Dauphin County's Elections Department. In six days, our country will take part in the most consequential election in our lifetime. And your business, and your Bureau of Elections Director last officially addressed this board and the public on September eleventh. I asked the Elections Director via email when the next elections meeting will be. He told me November thirteenth. Really? A presidential election? An election that will have earthquakeing consequences? And the next meeting will be eight days after the election? Perhaps you find no reason to have any report from your Elections Director, but I have questions, and I suspect I'm not the only one. And since many, since some of my emails went unanswered, I figured why bother sending more? So now I'm here with my questions in no particular order. Which of you, or is it all of you, that have direct oversight of the Elections Department? On October first, I received a report from your new Elections Director, Mr. Spackman, with the numbers of mail-in ballot application received and the number of ballots sent. At that time, and it was October first, there was, and I'm estimating, but I do have the paper with me. There were thirty thousand mail-in applications received and twenty-eight thousand ballots sent. So that day, there was a backlog of about two thousand mail-in ballots to be sent out. What's the current status? I'm not suggesting there's a problem, but again, share with us how things are going in the Elections Office. Are you caught up on mail-in applications and ballots? Have all the, have all the ballots been sent? Is there any backlog? Recently, in the news, York County was exposed for a massive backlog, Luzerne County as well. And York County, I just noticed a headline today, sent ballots to the wrong address. You know, all kinds of things happen. Another question, on Mr. Spackman's report, there are column headings that read, I know this is a lot, so I hope you're following me.
I'm taking notes.
Okay, there are column headings that read on the report he gave me, ballots returned and, and votes recorded. I expected data, numbers, to be in the ballots returned column, but not in the votes recorded column. but not in the votes recorded column. I thought votes weren't recorded until election day. How is this explained? May- maybe there's an explanation. Um oddly, one column had more votes recorded than ballots returned. How is that possible? That was October.
Can I, can I just ask really quickly, you said October first, what um, you're referencing something that Spackman sent you?
Like it was generated from the shore system.
Shore system, okay.
For, for Dauphin County.
Okay.
At that time.
For sure. Thank you.
Um. Sorry, I'm wrapping up here. Um onto another question. I'm sure you know that in Lancaster County, an investigation is underway after the election staff received a large drop from an individual or individuals of voter applications, many, many of which um are looking to be fraudulent. The Lancaster County Commissioners credited its staff for its alert observations in catching the duplicate handwriting or missing points of information, et cetera. So my question for you is, did Dauphin County receive any unusually large batches of voter applications? Did they receive any fraudulent voter applications at all? I know I heard you just reference that in your past, you know, there was spotty occasions of that. Um after the, after the Lancaster County debacle, did you receive guidance from the state on things to look for or any individuals to watch for? Did you, the commissioners, provide any guidance to your Bureau of Elections staff? I know the Lancaster County Commissioners credited their BOE's multi-step process of closely watching signatures and handwriting, entering the SSN numbers into the computer to check, to check the validity. Is this process followed here? Um again, without hearing from Dauphin County, we are left to believe that everything is going merrily, merrily, merrily. And maybe it is, but it would be nice to have a public reassurance that the staff is caught up with all the applications, ballots being sent, caught up with that as well, and if they are feeling confident about election day, or if they feel the need for extra staffing. And with the notice-to-cure process that you recently voted on, will the staff be able to handle this additional duty? Considering the record number of mail-in ballots that poured in. But again, final point, just knowing the status and hearing something versus this eerie kind of quiet and darkness that hovers over Dauphin County's election processes would be great. And if there's someone here that I could forward my questions to, please let me know.
Well, um, I'll, I'll begin by just simply saying that uh Commissioner Hardwick is the oversight for, for that. So I, I don't think I have an email from you. Uh you'd said some emails were missed. I, I assume, or that you, you didn't get responses to some emails. Um uh you can certainly email all three of us. Uh as commissioners, we want to certainly be involved. We're all on the Board of Elections, so please email us those questions.
Emails publicly, um.
Yes, uh J Douglas at DauphinCounty.gov. M. Priest.
Priest.
At Daup-
Priest with a D.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so um I don't want to speak to specifics that I'm not a hundred percent sure of. Um but if you were to send some of those questions, I don't know why we couldn't communicate um uh some information back to you. So, so please, uh, and, and I don't know if you have anything, Commissioner Priest used to be the first.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh just want to echo some of your comments. Yes, Commissioner Hardwick has oversight of the Voter Registration and Elections Department. Uh he took over in January of this year. I had served in that capacity for close to uh a decade, uh and had the privilege of working with former Director Steve Chivetti, who was here for thirty-six years, and then former Director Jerry Feizer, who retired last year, and Chris Spackman, he had trained him uh for that purpose. As I mentioned, we have twelve hundred volunteers who'll be ready to go on election day. Uh I can't speak for Commissioner Hardwick, because he is currently the oversight, but the three commissioners make up the election board. And we served on that three or four years. The one year we can't serve on it is the year that we are on the ballot. And then we appoint three other individuals from around the county that sit.
One more question. When you say there's twelve thousand volunteers.
Twelve, twelve hundred volunteers, they're going to help at the polling places.
At polling places, not necessarily at the counting.
And at the county office. I, I'd say it's going to have close to a hundred people there uh assisting on election day, maybe fifty to a hundred, I'm not sure. Vince, you know the closer number. Yeah, but we will have folks there assisting the operational election day. Um and then in terms of uh, was there any unusual activity? Uh we were just notified uh this past week uh of an individual who did bring in a large batch. Uh it was on video surveillance, and then Mr. Spackman did reach out, I believe, uh to the U.S. Postal Service, and it was a U.S. Postal Service employee who had put the large batch in there. They're gonna, I guess they're talking to the staff member, so they don't do it again. But we did let the district attorney know. Uh so I mean, we are aware of certain things, but we don't believe Director Spackman, and we don't believe that there was anything nefarious with that.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
I, I did, I did just receive a text from uh Spackman. We have received forty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-four applications for mail-in ballots. Uh we've received thirty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven of those back. Uh I asked how many still need to go out. Um I, I don't, because the deadline was yesterday, and we did have an influx of people yesterday. Does that make sense in, in line? I don't know that we have a, a concrete number, so I don't want to share a number right now, but I know they're doing everything they can to diligently get those sent out as quickly as possible, obviously recognizing the turnaround time. But thank you for your comments, and if you email us, we'll do our best to share whatever other information we can. Appreciate you, Carol. Mr. Conley.
Uh Tom Conley, three forty-five North Harrisburg Street. Um I'll start with the uh Elections Office. On the last day that you could register the vote, um I had uh reason to go to the Elections Office, and um the great thing was it was busy. Uh there was the deadline, so people were, were registering. Um the, the bad thing is the size of the office, the parking, and the fact that uh all available space was taken up. Um so I ended up not doing what I intended to do that day. Uh went outside, spoke to some other people. Uh it was very disappointing that three men were sharing the flat top of a trash can to fill out important paperwork. Um and there were people all around, and I had asked if it was like that for a while, and they said it was. Um so I decided to come back about forty minutes later. Um the same situation, and, and it's, it's a tough situation, because the office is there three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and now you have a day when it's, when it's really, really busy. Um but it was at the point now where um it was gridlocked. You couldn't get through from e- e- either side, you know, coming from the east or the west. It sits in a private property um compound there. Uh there, there was former uh county use. So this time, I looked for an available spot. Uh there seems to be a solution to this. The Coroner's Office has uh twelve spots um in a row that are all signed, that it's for official coroner use only. Um ten of those were empty. They were empty both times I was there that day. Uh but it appears that some of the coroner's employees and some of the election staff might possibly park on the Spring Creek side, eliminating those six or seven overflow spots. And um not saying that's an issue, people want to park close to work, but, but there's a very solvable problem here to at least during, um you know, from now to election day, while this, this activity has occurred, which is going to lead me to the next thing. Um I thought it was a one-day issue. It is not. It has been every day. I, I made a point to go by every single day. Um I have uh some pictures. I posted pictures. I saw there was somebody who had a, a much farther broader reach than I did that posted something, so I added my pictures um to that. But if you can't approach the office with your vehicle, um what's happening is people have been parking as far away as the green belt uh parking trailhead, because it's a towaway zone at the Vice Line House. It says no parking at the County Coroner's Office. There are seven parking spots at the Elections Office, in, in addition to two handicaps. The handicaps are in a a weird spot there, because it's small, so when people pull in the middle, they're blocking that. Um so I feel like i- if it hasn't been addressed um today, uh if there's some way to get a picnic table, a table, a desk outside. Um I have a picture that was sent to me yesterday of ten people outside. Um these are random times, random pictures, but it, I, I, I think of it like this. When, when you have a, a crisis and, and the numbers are high. Um COVID, for example, you had satellite offices, you made arrangements. Um th- this is the time in this particular election. The rest of the elections, I, I think it, it's, it's fine. The place works, people flow in and out, they come back later. But um with the numbers that Commissioner Priest had, had mentioned, and, and I agree with you, seventy-six percent is a huge increase on most elections. I would love to see seventy-six percent on municipal elections. It's crazy that it's not a hundred percent. Um but for the people that are trying, I think they, they at least could, could get those conveniences. And all, all I'm saying is, if there's a way to make it better today, tomorrow, Monday and Tuesday, um I'd appreciate, and, and I think that you'll look at that. Um the second topic is, um I came here.
Can I comment on that first topic? We're, we're just lucky that we've had such great weather, too. If it was raining or snowing or, or something like that, it would have been a lot more difficult for those residents to be standing outside in the, the, in those conditions, but.
No. And, and, and I want to point out, I, I've also come here to thank um prior directors and the current director. So um I've, I've praised uh Mr. Chivetti, Mr. Feizer, and um Mr. Spackman when, when they, when, you know, things go well. And I'm not saying that it's them. I'm just saying that, you know, this is the Elections Board. Maybe you could get them um some help, and, and uh because what's, what's happening now is a lot of people are um documenting their experience, how long it took, and, and it, it really is taking away the, the convenience of voting early. If it takes longer to vote early and you can't park, and that's what you were trying to avoid, spending that much time and having parking issues on election day, um you're not gaining anything. Um and, and, and I'll be uh brief with the next two points. Uh I'm still concerned about comments being deleted. Since I spoke last week, um I have not seen the four comments that I specifically spoke about, which would be um three individuals, one made two comments, and the other one made a comment. They're not back on there. Um I do have screenshots from the meeting. I could forward that if, if that's a um, you know, if, if you don't have an IT method to get that. But since then, what's really disturbing is um I've seen three other people make the same allegation. Uh and some of those are actually on comments, because after I spoke last week, I don't think it was an hour later that I got a notification that comments were um activated again. So I feel like they were taken off for a period of time. After I spoke, they went back on, which makes sense, because if they were deactivated, it takes another action. So may, maybe they were deactivated, deleted for, for, you know, an individual short period of time, but then they weren't turned on until after I spoke. So uh I will say, um I would like to see the comments restored that were removed. Uh but I'm also happy that the, the comment um function was restored shortly after I spoke at the meeting, so I appreciate that. And then, and the final.
Really quick, before, before you move forward, just to clarify that, I just want to make sure I understand correctly. Uh, Mr. Pease, the, it's your understanding that we did intentionally remove some comments, but the other piece of this, which is commenting on certain posts being removed, that's, that was less in the direction, that was more uh a potential, like, we've traditionally not allowed for live commenting when a meeting is taking place, but after the meeting posts, you can make a comment. So uh and then there was one meeting where maybe that may have been different, because we had someone different maybe running the process that, you know, might, might not have checked the right button. I just, I just want to make sure that that's understood as like Yes. accidental, not intentional, whereas there were comments intentionally.
Yeah, so regarding commenting during the live feed, since we began, I believe it was in June, uh the practice has supposed to have been no commenting during the live streaming. Like right now, people aren't able to comment. But as soon as that live stream is ended, then comments are able to be turned back on. It is my assumption, I don't know which meeting that may have been. I think there may have been a mistake where um live co- live comments were happening, and then to see that maybe the next meeting that you couldn't, I think that might be where this confusion kind of happened, but it's been the practice and continued practice of our IT department that a lot, comments during live stream are not, they're not turned on, but then immediately after they are.
Yeah, and, and I understand that. I'm, I'm not necessarily referring to that. What happens is someone watches the meeting later, and then when they comment, it would look to somebody that they commented at the time of the meeting, because if I watched the meeting and I comment at seven minutes and twelve seconds, and that's where I comment, it will appear that that's when the comment went on, even if I do it the next day or the next day or the next day. So you can't automatically assume, some people wait until the interest, uh the, the topic that interests them comes up, and they want to comment on that. Now, it runs a, a continuous feed down through, so it'll say it seven minutes, twelve seconds, so-and-so commented on this. That just is the time of the meeting that is repeating. It does not mean they commented at the meeting live. So no, no comment, and, and I appreciate what you're saying. I understand during the meeting, but no comment that I'm referring to um went on during a live meeting and then was removed for that reason.
I understand. Yeah.
Um and that's common on anything that you, you watch. Um you know, at, at one hour and seven minutes, you want to say, hey, I disagree with that, or I think those people are great. That's how it will appear on the Facebook comments. So um I just want to be clear on that. But, but I do appreciate that you're looking into it. I appreciate that the comments were um reactivated after the meeting, but I would like to see the comments restored. So when people go back to the meeting that they commented on, um their comment was, was there, and they have generated an answer, may have been a compliment, it may, it may have been a complaint, I don't know. But um I don't think it's fair to the public to make comments on a public meeting, and then have people pick and choose when they take them off. And finally, um another story came out today, and um you've had some of this discussion. Does Jeff Haste run this county? Is he over the billion dollars that flow through her every four years? The man is not in office, and I have to get up today and read that he got a friend, a two-million-dollar contract. After reading that, he got his wife what looks like a no-show, no-work job. Then I have to see that he gets money from the NRA that was coming to generate money. Over and over and over again, this person who is not here is constantly showing up in the news for getting money from the taxpayers. And I looked at some of the quotes in today's stories from people that deal with ethics and law and government, and they all say, very questionable, you know, highly improbable, not good for the taxpayer. This board can fix that. You can fix that. We got rid of three people out of this building, and it was like life or death in June to get rid of Bridget Whitley, Cole Goodman, and Rajen Harris. Three people. We had to get rid of them, because whatever was going on was really bad. This is worse. One of those people had to pay money back. Start tallying up the bill. Tally it up, the million, the sixty thousand, the eighteen thousand, the twenty-four thousand, the charge cards, the friends' money. Start adding it up, and I will respect this board more and this entire county if fair is fair. And we say that, you know, someone made a mistake, and it caused a person to pay a fee or a fine, and that person was responsible. Let's find out how much money was taken out of the public's bank account, the funds that we need. How many people died in the prison? How many people overdosed on drugs? How many elderly aren't cared for? How many problems there were in children and youth and all these things, because we didn't have money to fix it while we were letting somebody apparently take money who is still taking money to this day. I could go on forever. I apologize if I was over the three minutes. Right here.
Well, uh, yeah, I do want to speak briefly to the Facebook comments that were removed. Uh I was unaware that that took place. That was a shock to me last week when I discovered that Facebook comments had been removed, and I just want to speak as one commissioner that uh I do not believe we should be removing Facebook comments uh that do not violate the Facebook agreement for comments. Uh we are a government body, and if people are not allowed to dissent against their leaders and against their elected officials, uh then we are running a very uh suspicious path, I would say, if we are going to remove comments um that uh speak ill of elected officials. If it is a threat, if it is uh legitimate harassment, if it is profane, there, these all fit within the, the face with, within Facebook's in this particular case, as we live stream to Facebook. If it's within Facebook's um user agreement for uh we can report it and have it removed, but to just uh remove independently, uh certainly without including the board. Commissioner Priest, you weren't included in that decision. You are oversight of IT. Um uh I, 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 I don't really see a, a path or way in which that is proper uh or even legal, and it would be my particular uh position that we reinstate those comments as those comments are uh from the public. And um while uh whether, whether I agree or don't agree with the comments is, is neither here nor there, there's going to be, there's part of being an elected official is that I have to see comments and have people tell me things that I completely disagree with, that can be hurtful, that can be um even maligning at times, but uh that's part of what you sign up for when you're going to be an elected official. And so um I, I only say that just to say, I, I believe um the First Amendment trumps our, you know, our current policy and procedures for social media, which I do not think is in line with the Constitution or the recent Supreme Court ruling of uh, I believe in April, they ruled um that government officials cannot delete comments or block users. And so um that being said, uh And so that being said, I feel strongly, we need to come in compliance with those rulings and the Constitution.
Mr. Chairman, I think you're being overly kind there. As the oversight of IT, no one ever contacted me and asked me to approve the removal. Somebody contacted IT and had that done. And therein lies the issue that I still have. There's been no formal declaration of how that officially occurred or who directed that. I'm going to keep, I'm going to keep checking on that until we get to the bottom of it. But there's no reason for Facebook posts to be removed, whether they're pro or anti us or platforms. People have a right to say what they want to say, whether we like it or not. But the fact is they were removed and they were removed for a reason and need to be put back in. And then I have a question for the solicitor.
Should we make a motion to just do that now, since we're both in agreement on this? I would assume, I'll make a motion that we reinstate any comments deleted. I'm aware of two comments that were deleted on, I believe, October 11th. Am I accurate on that date? Is it even possible? Maybe, maybe here's what I would say. Can we investigate whether it's possible to restore comments that have been removed? And if if it is possible, it is the will, I believe, of this board to reinstate those comments. That's the motion I'm making. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. And then I have a question of the solicitor that it's been brought up a couple of times now about an individual serving on current boards. Is this board, is this board allowed to legally remove an individual during the calendar year prior to reorganization and reappointment of boards? Can we just, can we just go ahead and randomly at some time during the year, remove someone from a board? I'm just asking for clarification. If you need to look it up, please let me know.
Mr. Priest, this is a matter that the solicitor's office will advise all three commissioners on. But that must be an executive session. This is being considered. This is under review. And there will be recommendations made to all three commissioners. I cannot speak publicly.
Thank you.
We can, however, cancel a $60,000 contract without the solicitors needing to approve that. But I've already made that motion. Oona.
Wondering if I was going to get a turn there. You guys are really fired up. Oh, no, sigh. I live in Swatara Township. A couple of things. First off, I just on the elections, I just want to say like Jerry Fizer is gone, but he was a great director of elections. And I think that he ran an apartment that is full of integrity. And I, I personally, who don't trust anything about this government, trust that the election will be run as fairly as possible in Dolphin County. And that's saying something. I also don't think that people like that are, but I, that being said, I think that it would be actually bad for the county to be giving out, trying to give out numbers right now, this close to the election with everything changing. Because I fear that what will happen is people will see things that are in transit and take it to mean that there's something wrong with the vote when it actually isn't like things are just moving really quickly. And I would hate for this to turn into like a people stole the election when really it's just like numbers are moving, you know, swiftly. I just wanted to state that that there could be unintended consequences of too much transparency in this moment about vote counts. I wanted to speak to you guys today about, and it's good to hear that it's under review, removing Jeff Haste from positions. It is very, very, very frightening to me how things are moving through this county. We found out today again, more contracts are moving without bidding processes and are moving in a manner that are not transparent. And honestly, like it's corruption, right? Like this is corruption, whether it's you can find some legal loophole, whether or not you can can say this is how business was always done. It might be how business was always done, but you know, it's got to change, right? Because it wasn't done correctly and we're starting to see that now. And I think that there has to be a big change in this county. I see that you guys are obviously trying to get more information and be more directly involved in decisions that go out with contracts. But there, there's so many things that can be fixed in this county. There are so many things that we can continue improving on, people that still need our help. I see people are getting laid off left and right. I don't know if anyone else has been picking up on that. But there's been a significant amount of layoffs recently locally and in this state. And I am concerned that people are going to be in more dire straits soon and that we should be concerned about that as we go into the budget process. Speaking of the budget process, I'd like to know, when are those hearings going to be?
What are the, what are the dates? They're public, they were just announced 13th, 14th and 15th. And I think it'll be what, nine thirty to? Okay.
In this
In this room. Yes, yep.
Okay. And I won't get here and be found out that it was already over or anything like that. It'll be actually on time scheduled in.
The only thing to be noted is that I believe we schedule fifteen minutes for each department. And were we to be running ahead, we could end early.
But if I were to come on time.
You will not, you will not miss it. No, because I'm showing up on time too, Oona. So all of them missed it too, which, you know, who knows?
Hey, you never know around here what could happen. Things seem to happen when nobody's looking around here. They could do a meeting without you here. As we've already seen will happen in this county. And then I have one last thing and man, it's really, oh, the Facebook comments. This is like, I don't understand why you would not like an easy fix is just like allow comments during the live stream. It's unclear to me why you wouldn't. In fact, I think that allowing comments during the live stream would actually increase how many people see the feed. So I know that you're investigating, did it like LOL, like I didn't go to investigation school, but I'm pretty sure we can all figure it out. But I just want to say that I think that you should just allow live comments and not clearly not delete any unless they're harassment, you know, and those types of things, violent. I think it's pretty easy. There's no reason not to allow comments during the live stream because that's when people are watching. Then they have to watch it again just to lay the comment down and tell you how wrong you are. No, like we have to wait for the end, but most people shouldn't. If they're online, they should get to complain right away. So that's my comments for today. Thank you, guys.
Oh, no, always a pleasure. Commissioner Priest, as oversight of IT, can I ask that maybe you look into, I believe we might use a third party platform for streaming. And if that third party platform is capable of allowing for live comments and if there's a reason in which we've disabled that, like some type of, you know, reasoning, I would like to know.
Fair request.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Yep, I read the article this morning too. Haven't been able to digest it all. And in listening to things that we talked about today in this meeting and this county right now has an ethics and access problem. The ethics, when I look at the NRA contract, visit Harrisburg Hershey, the solar farm. And I mean that in its entirety from way back 2011 and earlier, all the way up to the IDA meeting that I was at last week on the 21st, prime care and other prison contracts, the healthcare and insurances, which have contracts, which have come out while I've been sitting at this meeting. The catering business, H R G and the bridges, the Facebook comments, the discussions that have gone back and forth about the use of a particular polling place. All of these things, all of these things are about ethics. And when we elect you as commissioners, we expect that you will bring forth the best in ethical behavior. And clearly, that has not happened. And clearly, there is a pattern and practice of that which predates both of you who I'm talking to right now. I mean, this is a long, this is decades long. And those are the ethical issues that I'm looking at. When we talk about access, the processes are not open. The two of you sitting before me have shared over the weeks that there are processes which you have been excluded from, have not been part of, even things that are in your own purview, like IT. It is also clear in that that the process for citizen participation is not easy. When I was at the IDA meeting, I asked about it being televised and they said, oh, we couldn't do that. We don't, we don't have that here. We don't have that capability. This is 2024. Anybody with a laptop and a phone can stream a meeting. Like that, that excuse does not work. Plus, I'm pretty sure when they met, this room was open. The meeting to open the contract could have been held here. Just saying, Facebook, that works, but it would really be better if the county had a YouTube channel. And perhaps you could partner with the city and with their channel 20 and livestream your meetings. Authority meetings, these meetings, budget hearings, all of these meetings can be livestreamed. And I think if we go back to when you started livestreaming these meetings, there has been an uptick in public participation. People are watching, people are commenting. More people are showing up here, both to bring concerns and to say, hey, you're doing a good job. You're getting both up, you're getting that kind of feedback. And that's what we should be hoping for. And my final little piece is when I look at the money that has gone into these contracts, these auto renewals and many of the issues that that you all have brought up, the amount of money. And then I look at that and I look at what's on the agenda today for human services. And you have item 18, which has a hundred percent state funding. And you have items 22 through 27, which are almost ninety-eight percent state funding. Taxpayers and the county itself puts very little money into human services and human needs. And in bringing that up, I have been lectured that I don't understand how that process works. And actually, I do understand how that process works. And we have gaming funds. Hmm, I noticed how the casino tax figured into the solar farm. And it's not that a solar farm is a bad technology or a money losing technology right here on your own agenda today. You are under correspondence. You have notification about a solar farm project, a private one in Lancaster. So when run properly by the right people, they can do what we want them to do and what we expect them to do. But but that was never the goal, obviously, in that solar process, that in our county solar farm process. That process was to line pockets and that process was to line friends' pockets. And yes, it does feel like there is a fourth unelected commissioner here and whose main focus is money. And so we have so much human need. And yet we are, we are focused on this. And I think it's time for us to shift our thinking on where our money goes and what we use it for. And my final question is, I know that you always ask us where we live, to identify where we live. And I, I know that there are people who come to city council who make comment, who don't live in the city. Sometimes they're allowed to make comment. If it's really busy, they might not. But it doesn't go into the record if they aren't a city resident. So I'm just hoping that comments made by someone who lives in Cumberland County do not go into our public record. Thank you.
Understood. I guess I'll direct the solicitor to look into whether or not those comments from outside of the county should go into the record. And thank you for your comments. The one thing I will say is the correspondence is not for a solar farm in Lancaster, it's in Lykins. But that's okay, it's okay. No problem. Just, just for those who maybe don't have an agenda in front of them. I just wanted to make that clear. Are there any other comments for public participation? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion for adjournment.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.